I ask you to let it go again, what do you do? Your, oh my God, where your reputation is not in this house. Oh, Allison Carr, for being to fully taken. How? Were they in the business and their character? And you not believe that we should open enough to applications? Yeah, okay, so we have an election process. We had people who took out the papers, filed the money, gathered the signatures, locked door to door. And those are the people that should be considered as disappointing as I want. And how much to Allison Carr has already proved that she was a great mayor? And I think she would be a great council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi, everybody. I'm Renee Wayna. I live at 114 Carlson Drive. I usually don't talk in these town form rooms, but I, I grew up here. Gosh, we moved into Delray Oaks in 1972. So I can say that I've been in the city for an awful long time, but I grew up and then I moved away. And I came back in 2019 when Allison Kerr was mayor of Delray Oaks. And I just want to say I wasn't involved in city stuff. My, I had learned because I have parents that were, you know, my mom was on a planning commission for over 25 years. So I do have the community spirit, I believe, in my background and just, I love this community in city. And I can say when I moved away, I was in a community probably the size of Seaside. I couldn't tell you one council member name. I can't even tell you who the mayor was. If there just wasn't that personal camaraderie come together. I don't like seeing any type of division in this city. I think what we have here is an absolute gem. I lived away from it and I came back knowing that I always wanted to come back here and live out the rest of my days here in Delray Oaks, anywhere. This was just such a great place. And the reason I'm standing here tonight is I think we have a wonderful opportunity. I think we've got a great new council looking forward to seeing what we do. Scott, Mayor Scott, Allison has been, as mayor, she was fabulous. I got here, I got a phone call from the mayor after I'd been here not only a month, inviting me to a couple of meetings and getting involved. And I wasn't working yet, I didn't. And I, I accepted the invitation for coffee. And I'm so glad I did because I became a part of Sustainable Delray Oaks. I got to learn about the Arts Council. I met Kim, I got to meet other people in the community. We got to create, help create the Butterfly Garden, which is awesome. I grew up in those tennis courts, those tennis courts. And it's just so great to have beauty kind of around it now. And I just think that she would be a great addition because she really did put together all of those wonderful committees. And she always followed up because COVID. And she made phone calls to check on my mom to see if she was okay. And we had campfire meetings via Zoom, so we knew what was going on here in the city. So I don't want to take up any more time to ramble, but I just think that she again has been here and she just makes sense to be part of the council. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Renee.
I'm getting rid of the echo. Yeah, I'm nervous, but my name is Mayola. I'm a little bit busy this and I live in Delray Oaks for the last five years. I don't even think of that, but raised, raising still two children, about to become an empty mess room. But I wanted to echo a lot of what the others have said here. I really appreciate us seeing the different options. And one of the things that I'm also sort of holding and thinking about, you know, you as a newly appointed mayor and what might be feeling in terms of getting like big shoes to fill and some of the things, you know, what we, what come in. And, and I'm very, at the same time, I'm, I'm really feeling very hopeful. And, you know, in, in terms of this council and you continuing, you know, what has been, what we've heard here today about, you know, the inclusivity and bringing in our voices. I was somewhere as well who didn't participate and began to get involved in, you know, working on the Butterfly Garden and in the elections. And so I'm very, it's an example that I shall now thank for my children. So I'm very grateful for that. And I, I'm, one of the things that I wanted to bring in and I support of doing a direct appointment of Allison, of her as well. That wasn't mentioned as I do see a difference between the options of the application process and the direct appointment in that the application process, it would be a few select members, I imagine, who would go through that process, as you have in the past with senior planners and everyone that, that is, it is different than what we, the opportunity that is before us now, which is that we just, in, in a case of making this direct appointment right after elections and you've heard the people's voices, to really have, it, it where it puts, it feels like it's putting us in the seat of those interview, you know, the interviewers instead of a few select people, that it really is considering the 432 folks that voted for Allison Kerr that feels like it's the most inclusive, the most response, financially responsible option to have and the most efficient because it feels like someone who's coming in, there's no need, their qualifications are apparent. And it's, it's like it just went through an application process, which was going through this election. So I really appreciate you all working together again and, and I'm hoping to be able to participate more, especially once my kiddo graduates. But thank you so much for your flexibility for making good explanations today. So, thank you.
Right, thank you, Mayola.
Good evening, it's Frederica Jones from Ait Hill Place. I resided here for 15 years, only being engaged with city governing the past four years. And that was at the invitation of Allison Kerr. As a result of that invitation, I've met my wonderful neighbors. And I've enjoyed being part of community committees that have been established by Allison. Mayor, you spoke at the last meeting that you were not going to set aside committee, committees or set aside things that have already been put in place by former mayor Allison. And that you intended to advance those programs that have been set forth by her. So when doing that, when I was looking back, we were aware that going through what you're going through tonight is a very big responsibility on the city council to make the appointment this month for the various committees that you need to fulfill to represent the city. Obviously, in order to accomplish this, a full council must be established sooner than later. I too am not an advocate for an election. But if I've seen some of the tactics and prior events as what has been happening on prior occurrences, I would say then that's probably the fairest way to do it and let the people speak again. I am in strong support of a direct appointment that is based on our last election results. Allison received the most votes and I'm going to say today that I'm a proud voter that voted with the 431 other residents in this community. So as a resident, I'm asking that you fulfill your obligations and appoint Allison to the council seat so our city can move forward expeditiously and immediately get on those committees. And let's keep the momentum going forward in a positive manner. Working together has been your motto, Mr. Mayor, as far as when you were running and to end the divisiveness. And what better way than to bring everybody along together and have those same goals moving forward? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Frederica.
Good evening, I'm Carol Catherine from Five Alton Circle. I support the direct appointment of Allison. Allison received so many votes showing that many people in Delray Oaks really support her. So I think if she were appointed, many people in Delray Oaks would be very happy to see that happen. Also, I'm aware there are three new members on this council. Allison has a lot of experience and I think she could bring that experience to help the new people so that our council can function more effectively in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening, my name is Anne Anne Rata, I live in Altura Place. I've lived in Delray Oaks for 30 years and I'm another one who never got involved, especially until Allison came. I'm, I'm on the Sustainable Delray Oaks. And it's been a joy to meet some of my fellow residents through Allison. I also support direct nomination. I think that the November election gives us all the information that we need. It shows that there's substantial support for Allison in this, in the city. And she has tremendous experience and I definitely do not want to go to an election. That would be foolhardy. And so, yeah, I support direct nomination to Allison.
Thank you, Carol.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Stacy and I've lived on Rosita Road with my husband for almost 10 years. Delray Oaks is a small city, a lot of big projects and important issues on its plate. And in the interests of efficiency and effectiveness, I urge the city council to appoint Allison Kerr to fill vacant seats at the earliest opportunity. She has the experience and the knowledge that we need. She's familiar to so many of us in Delray Oaks and she's a proven vote getter. I hope you'll give this a serious consideration.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
New mayor council, your figure, your windmill. I'll try to keep this brief to the point. First is being demonstrated right now in our capital, we come in here, our council comes, their government requires a timely, coherent, orderly transfer of power. Many issues weigh our city and the sooner we have a full council, the better. Second, there is another candidate for council who is as qualified as ours. She's worked tirelessly for years to serve Delray Oaks and knows every issue inside and out. She'll hit the ground running immediately. Lastly, much has been said over the last few years and this evening about the vicissitudes in our little city. Allison lost her reelection bid fair and square. However, she did receive this order of 48% of those who voted for mayor. I can't think of a better way to address any devices that's out there than extending my branch and seating from the council. If it's a very qualified candidate in the seat and we show respect for the almost half of the city voters who wanted to see your own council. It's truly win-win situation, though I also would support a direct appointment. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mary.
Good evening, Wayne Marion, Rosita Road. And congratulations to all the new members and to you, Mayor. I'd like to just state my support for your Allison direct appointment. I know she is, she could do the job. She's got the experience. And I agree with just about everything that everybody else has been saying about her. And I think there's only one question is that if she's appointed, will she accept? Thank you.
Any? Can park the ever day? And I realize standing up here and taking an opposing view to those last 15 or 20 comments is risking physical damage to my property, much like happened when we opposed this particular person running four years ago and our road curried with damp lines. There's no denying Allison Kerr has a gift for being a social worker. There's no denying she has an ability to communicate with people. But do we really want to put back on the council the person who single-handedly changed us from being known as Mayberry to Drama Queen DRO, as quoted in the Monterey coming week? Do we really want to put back on the council the person who promoted all the angler and vitriol that took place going into the 2018 election through her negative campaign? Who single-handedly forced out the previous city manager, you know, okay? Do we really want to put back on the council someone that has no problem with plagiarism? An example being her taking credit for the $500,000 reduction in our obligation. When if someone would simply come down and talk to staff, they find out it was actually John Gagliotti and a previous and current city manager that dealt with that money. Or taking credit for the park improvement in her recent campaign. When a simple discussion with anyone on staff reveals that finding the funding, applying for the funding, receiving and applying the funding and providing it in purpose was all done by city staff. Do we really want to put back on the city council someone who was already predisposed to block any development, regardless of its long-term financial impact on the city? And having lived through that, I can almost guarantee that someone in this crowd, this same crowd, will behave the same way as they did four years ago and rain down threats and negative comments should anyone be selected other than their candidate. Do we really want to put back on the council someone that has followers like that? People have talked about moving the forwards, moving the city forward and claiming that the, her previous mayor did that. Well, I'm kind of curious because I've looked at the report, I've been here for all four years. Just how did we move forward? Do we have more business? Do we have more money coming in? Have we got a better relationship with the airport? Those are my questions. Louise Getzel, John Gagliotti, somebody that isn't quite the focal point would be a much better solution, in my opinion. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Castle. Dennis Olian, Rosita Stride. I was, I was appointed to this council back in, I think, 2002, maybe early 2003, I can't remember anymore. And I served on it for 14 years, was elected, was elected after being appointed. And the thing that is disturbing to me about tonight is that, first of all, people are making comparisons, looking at numbers for people who ran for city council and got $387,000 and when there were three candidates for city council. So this is, this is an unrealistic comparison. And I think it's very important that, that we take a look at why Scott Donaldson was elected to mayor. And I think the evidence is out there and said he got around and talked to people. Very much like Allison's done. I'm not, I'm not critical of Allison and her performance. I want to make that very clear. Not critical of her at all. But I have had objections to some of the things that I don't know whether they were Allison's statements or somebody else's statements that I think are very inaccurate. So this is not about Allison, this is about the process that you're going through, the process exactly right. Do the application and appointment process. That is very important. There are plenty of people out here in the city who have quality. There are plenty of people out here in the city who are qualified to be a member of this council. It's not how many committees you've been on. If you want to talk about committees, think about my fourteen years and the numbers of committees at Isburg, not only on this city, but on, on boards of directors across the county. So there are other people who have lots of ideas bringing to the table. The application process to me is the fair way to go forward. The only way to go forward. Avoid the special election. You're gonna have a difficult time because you've got Louise Getzel, who I think is going to apply. I don't know. I don't know that Allison Kerr is going to apply. I don't know who's going to. But the council has to take into consideration those people's background, experience, and whether or not they'll fit in with a united Delray Oaks approach. So I urge you to stick to your guns. Don't listen to this. Well, go ahead and listen to these people. They're, they're providing you input. But it's obvious that it's obvious that they, they, they all got together and discussed this. I heard the same thing over and over again. Yes, Allison Kerr served the city well. Yes, Allison Kerr served the city well, but so did Louise Getzel. And so did other people serve the city well in many different ways. So please stick to your guns, stay with the plan, and go with the appointment process. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Cora. I live on Work Avenue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you, Mayor Donaldson and the council. I also show my support for the direct appointment of Allison Kerr. It is based on her performances as mayor. She's been dialed into the business of the city. She's done a great job. What I, what I have heard tonight, and I hope that you have heard also, is all of my residents, or almost all of my residents here in Delray Oaks, fellow residents, rather, giving support to Allison because of her great communication, inclusion of people into the business of the city. Okay? And, and I really want to reiterate that. And I feel that based on her track record, she'd be a great council. The, the special election is, is a waste of tens of thousands of dollars and we can be using those funds for something really important like improving our technology. She would call in on Zoom, but she can't call. We need to keep up with the times. We need to make positive changes. I'm not trying to denigrate anybody. I'm not trying to point fingers at everybody else. I'm not. There's, there's no point in being divisive. It's really being inclusive, right? And so if we want to be inclusive, let's look at the results of the previous election. And I think there's plenty of people here supporting Allison and her work. Thank you for the interest. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Scott Sine. I live at ten eighty-four Rosita Road. And I think this is my tenth year in Delray Oaks, but I've been a year selling this peninsula. And I've been recently engaging with the city of Isburg. It's my pleasure really to welcome this newly seated council. It's with the likes of Yara. I, and I think I'd just like to remind us all that this process is really important. This is, you know, figuring out the processes and following it. So I'm glad to hear you're talking about that. But we also know the city has so much work to do and there's a lot on your shoulders right now. So hopefully it'll happen timely and in a timely fashion with awareness, with this responsibility that you have. And really looking forward to seeing our general, of general planning development keep moving forward. And given that there's virtually no dissension in this line of fine citizens, I'd like to add my voice of support for your appointing Allison Kerr as your council.
Congratulations. My name is Helen Bruce Song. I'm from the Oaks. And I'd like to give my support to Allison being elected in the position of a councilwoman. I think it's the seamless way to go. She already understands everything. Will be open running immediately. And my understanding of what the attorney said was, even though it's on a gendered side, you can make a decision to appoint somebody if that's what you wanted to do. It's not second stone. That was my understanding of what he said. But I think given that she's been voted in twice, why appoint somebody that's never run? That you have no track record with as to how many people would have voted for? If we can't do a special election quicker than November, and if we're all prepared to spend whatever the cost is, and we can get it in March, then maybe we have to spend that money and prove that the other people that stepped forward, that people will vote for them. She'd been voted in easily the last twice and only missed by a very slim margin this time. I think it's worth a consideration. So I agree with everybody else that went ahead of me. Thank you.
You see, Kevin Raskoff for Backstreet Boys. So give you some unsolicited advice, if I might, for getting in my comment. I think many folks in the room are expecting a difficult decision ahead of the four council members here. And one of the things I, I, I try to remind myself on those sorts of situations is that everyone is here fighting for what they believe is best for the city, even if they come at it from different perspectives and different backgrounds, different biases. Everyone here is doing what they do, saying what they said here tonight because they, they feel it's best for the city. To that quote that everyone's the hero in their own story is something I try to remind myself a lot of when we're sort of facing potentially adversarial situations. So I, I don't know about the, this, this comment of divisiveness in the city. I feel like there's disagreement on direction and disagreements on approach. I, I myself haven't seen much divisiveness. I've seen a lot of people talking about it, but it seems to me that it's mostly people just unhappy with the fact that others have different opinions. I think democracy having different opinions is not something to be afraid of. And we shouldn't be afraid to talk about difficult things in committee as well. I, my biggest concern, you know, sort of regionally is all the different regional committees that need to be populated and staffed. I don't know many of you are quite, quite aware of this super important work that they're doing all around our community. And so the longer it takes to fill their seat until those can get appointed, I'm worried about not only what is not happening on those committees, but also Delray Oaks community is not being spoken for on those committees while we're, we're absent. So for me, that's a pretty big, big idea. So I'd like the, you know, the council to consider the merits of a potential direct appointment. I myself is in favor of Allison, but I'd like you to consider that carefully and and just if I could close with a word to Mayor Donaldson specifically, I think as others have said more eloquently than I are right now, but the thought of you sort of reaching out that olive branch, crossing the aisle, or doing that thing to bring the city together, the idea of bringing Allison onto this. I literally almost hear is the thought of that, something like that happening, bringing the city together. And I hope it's something that you can, you can look deep inside and see that's something that you are proof of. I'm not naive enough to, to not realize it's a complicated situation, but that would be an amazing situation and something that would be really good to see. So thank you, everybody, for your attention. Appreciate it. And thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow members. Congratulations. Yeah, I just have to ask you a question. And you're talking about questions from your neighbors. Do you mean community or like, like people right, right next door? Yeah, I support what you're saying. I just, I want to make sure that, you know, that you, you were expressing what the community is desiring.
Well, so before I even came to this council, I'm, I, I always want to seek for input. And of course, the best, the best people to take input would be from our neighbors and from our community. So, and, and I really liked, I was enlightened and because of all of their odds and, and justification, I was really like amazed, you know. So, so I didn't have all the answers and I'm also the smartest guy in, in this town. So what I need, the input from you, especially all of the people here who really stood up in there and had the courage to speak up and have your voice. And I'm really amazed with you because standing there is not easy. It's the same me here, standing in front of you, it's not easy. You know, so, and, and just being there, up and here, being with all of us here and having discussions and giving us your input and insight. I'm really so, so much grateful. So, so thank you for being here.
Okay, so I was kind of kind of intrigued because when you say neighbors, I visualize like you've got next door here.
Oh, oh, yes.
You're talking to the whole community. Okay. Sorry for the questions. My name is Rick Rorwell. I live in the Oaks. Mayor Donaldson came around a couple of times and I talked to him. I was very impressed with how he felt about the community and things moving forward. Also spent time with Donaldson. And very impressed too. Two great people that are involved in leadership, have been involved in new leadership. Is very good for the community. And I kind of understand the elephant in the room would be, you know, you're the new mayor. She was the ex-mayor and working together, whether you feel uncomfortable or not. But my, my opinion is that I think she'd be, it'd be great if she come back out of the council and we'd be even a better council with that person. Like I said, I come from the Oaks. And if I'm not supporting that somebody that lives in the Oaks is a prospective council member, that should give you a message. Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rick.
Hello. I'm Denise Sanders Leonard. I'm on Marina Road and it's nice to meet you, Mayor Donaldson. I just, after Kevin said what he did, I thought, I decided to pop only just because I do believe that the fastest, smartest, cleanest way to do this is to bring Allison Kerr on board. And I think my, and I'm not going to add anything new from what anybody says, but my, my tilt on it is I, I have felt like in the last, I don't know, eight, eight years, it feels like Delray Oaks is kind of a mini version of our country in terms of when people say divisiveness. And what a beautiful situation this would be if our whole government could work in a way where we take, take the expertise of the different views, honest to use instead of party's, but to be able to work together. And I just love that idea that, that Allison could bring, would want to come back and be on this, in this position. And that Mayor Donaldson would want her to be on this position because it's the right choice. So, thank you for your time.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm very excited to be here. I'm Jen Schreiner. I live in Marina. Some people may wonder why somebody from Marina comes to Delray Oaks. But I think Mr. Raskoff mentioned that a lot of these council members end up being on regional planning boards. And I want to say thank you to Mayor Donaldson for his vote on the M1 water recently. It was a pleasant surprise for me. I'm very involved in water politics. Right now I'm the president of Marine Coast Water District, but I'm here to speak as a resident. And I'm not the only one who's noticing that we need a regional approach. Today I got an email from Kevin Tilden. It's kind of surprised me, but the president of government is reaching out for support to me. And he's not, we're not, I don't have any relation, right? There's nothing there but regional planning and doing what's best for our entire community, not, not just for, not just Delray. We all need to work together. And I just want to mention a story because I was really surprised at the beginning of the pandemic, right before the pandemic, we lost our general manager and one of our board members. And so we went through the arduous process of replacing general manager and from Shertinger is a dream come true. It's, you know, got the finance, the economic and the water experience we needed. But also we went through the process of appointing to our board from our community. And thirty-eight thousand people, we only got three applications. They came in the day of the deadline. I know a lot of us are passionate in this room, but we're kind of a rare breed. And there's not a lot of people that can afford the time, that can make the, make the commitment, doing what's best for our community. And so when we got the three, I knew two already, even though thirty-eight thousand people, only a few. And I didn't know if they were going to do well, but yeah, no experience. The other two did do the application process and one of them had been controversial in an election before. And one of our board members had actually worked on a campaign against her, which had become quite negative. And so I was really worried about him. And when he said he had no questions for the applicant, I thought, oh, that's not a good sign. And then he surprised Vice President Cortez by making the nomination for the woman who had the most experience, who was ready to join our board and run full tilt boogie with us and our general manager. So I just want to say that as an example of where people set aside their personal challenges with one another, set aside their ego and just do what's best for the community. And I think in this case, a direct nomination for Allison Kerr, or if you want to go through the application process, I think you'll end up still with the same person. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Super Manager, Bill Rice, El Crone fifty-eight, Rob and Ryan. I'm probably going to sit on the couch tonight. It's kind of where it's going to go. I might lose my friend over this, but I'm an advocate of the application and appointment process. I think, you know, a lot of people are voting for Allison or winning Allison, and I totally support Allison a hundred percent. And if she's the best candidate, she can float right through the application process. And it will give the city council a way to look at other options. But I think the application and selection process is the way to go. Like I said, Allison will float to the top if she's the best candidate and you guys will have, but you'll have a pool of candidates to work with. I don't see direct appointment working. Now, it's going to be with a four-person city council. I think you're going to have two people on one side of the fence, two people on the other side of the fence. And then you're going to go to a flip of a coin or a draw of a card. You know, there's a lot of different ways to break the tie and I just don't think that's the way to run city. I think we put it out there to the people. If you get one application, you get ten, you get three like Jen and Sam, then you'll have someone to work with. So that's kind of my position and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Are there any other public comments? Public comment is now closed. I'll bring you back to the council for discussion and further comments. And Councilmember, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everyone hear me? Because I can't hear myself. First of all, I'm looking this right direct to me is the big screen online. And earlier, there were a lot of people who were there and, and, and I just wish that they could speak as well in our council because it's their chamber. And, and I just hope and wish and I dream that we're gonna have the option soon where even people online can speak up and have, have their voices raised here in our council. Because we always have reason why we can't be able to come over here. And other people have unfortunate circumstances, they have physical limitations. And of course, with the damage, with the danger that we have right now, especially with our weather. Not all of us can come over in here. However, we have related domains, other jurisdictions have already like having hybrid meetings. Even in the courts, we have hybrid meetings and it's, it's not impossible to have it done. And, and it's really like my, my wish and my dream that at least we can provide the city of Delray Oaks and its people all the options that is available right now in our modern world. And, and, and also it will also show our core value in the city, which is inclusiveness and diversity. And I don't want others who can come over in here because of those reasons or physical limitations not be able to be able to say what they, they want to say. And because they also deserve to have their voice heard in our council. So to have their voice heard in our council. So, uh, and let's please, uh, uh, I hope that we won't leave them behind, uh, because they're also our dear beloved neighbors here in Delray Oaks. So, uh, that's my first, uh, point and, uh, and, and I'm really like, uh, amazed, uh, with all the comments of, of our residents, our neighbors who are here to, tonight. Uh, because it's not easy. Uh, I know the people are shaking their hands, they're nervous. However, they came over in here tonight courageously, uh, to be able to tell their story, to be able to really like air, like express, uh, their thoughts. And we have really like heard a lot of comments like, uh, having the appointment, uh, the direct appointment, uh, of, of Allison and, and and I'm just really like, uh, uh, what I can say is I agree with all the, the the reasons and the comments that have been mentioned, uh, by the, by the public. And, and I just wish that our city council would hear those voices. So, uh, that's helpful, you come down. So, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. And, uh, I would like to address one of the comments that you made, and, and this is out to those who are watching remotely. There is an opportunity, and you've heard Patrice Beckioli read a letter from another residence. There, there is, there are other options if you want to have your voice heard. Um, in addition to that, we've got, uh, email, you can email any council member, text them with whatever comments that you may have. And they can read them for you here in open session. Ultimately, I too would like to get to the point where we can have that interaction remotely. We're not quite there yet, but, you know, ultimately that's the destination that we hope to reach. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. Uh, I'd like to begin by saying the, um, what we're seeing is option number three. Uh, I am not, I am ill-prepared to, um, to vote, uh, according to a, uh, nomination slash appointment. This evening it was not agendized, just verbally announced. The council was not made aware of, nor was the public. Uh, I was actually, I considered such. But I assumed that there were legal constraints, uh, there, which is the reason it was not, um, given to us as one of the options for appointments. Uh, so I'm not prepared to, uh, to move forward with, uh, with an appointment or a nomination this evening without, uh, a little deeper dive there. Uh, concerning option one, I think it's been clearly laid out. The, uh, what I see is very unnecessary, uh, fiscal impacts to the city, two hundred thirty, forty thousand dollars. And also the time constraints, um, between the parameters outlined here between a general election, even a special election. I think it's imperative that we fill this with seats and empower this council with a cohesive full roster, a good, uh, working team. And I think that we should, uh, do that expedientiously uh, and in the fairest way possible. Which is why, uh, I favor, uh, option two, as it were. I think that the, um, as has been recommended by the city manager, that the, uh, application process with a fair notice to the public. Uh, the application process is a fair and equitable opportunity for any residents to, uh, to apply for, for said position. And, um, that is the direction, that is the mindset that I am of. And I am prepared to move in that direction. Following discussion, whenever you're ready to entertain emotions, sir.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I, and I'd like to say, in, in finishing, if I may, and I realize it's not a, an, an agenda item, but I feel somewhat remiss if I didn't say, uh, well, two things actually. Um, the eighteen people that did speak here tonight, uh, you have been heard. And with due respect and appreciation, your opinions on this matter, um, obviously voiced strong support, uh, for, uh, a potential appointee in particular. I have heard you, the eighteen of you tonight, thank you for being here. I've also, as a member of this community during my time of canvassing and, uh, just recreationally in park and frog pond, walking around the neighborhoods with my dog, I've met many of you. I've met many of the other members of our community too. And I'm, uh, respectfully considering the opinions I've heard on the street. This has been mentioned also by our neighbors and community. So in a holistic way, um, everyone is there. And, uh, finally, um, it seems as though, uh, as been stated and as I recall, this has been encountered, this selection process has been encountered several times before and almost inevitably it will occur again. And I'm wondering if, should we, could we consider, um, by policy, adoption, some resolution, a bylaw by way of our ordinances, uh, look into the somewhat near future in establishing, setting some precedent and some firm guideline for when we encounter this again, um, that we can reflect on and make our choices in the world. A little easier.
Yeah, thank you. I, I agree with that. I think maybe that's something that we can take a look at down the road to, uh, you know, eliminate some of the, the questions and about the process. Uh, I think that's something that definitely staff can deal with. So I appreciate that. Councilmember Sheryl.
Yeah. Um, first I just want to thank the public for coming tonight. I know it's not easy, especially the weather that we've been having. Um, we're all brave enough to come out and share your thoughts and I, and I thank you for that. Um, Annie, I want to answer your question. Uh, if we do go with applications, those would, I'm assuming be in the agenda packet. So you would see them when we see them. Um, so i- in terms of the way I was thinking about the process, I, I went back to our core values in our city. And, and there was three that really apply to this process. One of them is fiscal responsibility, which I think we all agree. Um, we need to be responsible. We are elected to be, uh, responsible with our funds. And it seems as though, especially election, um, is not the most responsible way to, um, to spend the city money. So, um, the other two core values, um, on here is open communications and, and transparency. Um, I, I like hearing from the public. It is our job to listen to the public. We are representatives of you. And, um, and so I think, you know, for me, the direct appointment, um, based off election results, those were big voices that we just heard. Um, we, we just spent money on an election. And we know that there are two candidates who are interested in being on this council. And so we should acknowledge that and that, that, and recognize that we already have two people. I, would they be willing to be appointed at this point? I'm not sure. But I think we should, we should go in that direction. The other value that, um, we have on here is responsiveness to community needs and concerns, which is exactly what we're hearing tonight. Um, I'm, I, I have a science background. I feel more comfortable making hard decisions when I have data. Um, I think looking at election results, um, listening to people, um, who come here, that provides me data. Um, it's not biased on my point. Um, it's, it's honestly looking at, at everyone and, and hearing what they have to say. Now, if we go to an application process, we only have four voices that we're listening to. Um, and I, I, I think that downplays our core values of being responsive to community needs. Um, I, I believe that, that going into a direct appointment, I'm, I'm sorry that it wasn't reviewed as a, as an option in our staff report. I, I knew that that was an option because, John, you can mention that to me previous. Um, and so I, you know, it, it seems, it seems very straightforward. If we're looking for something that's timely, if we're looking for something that is fiscally responsible, if we're looking at something that, um, meets the needs of our community. Again, we just had nine hundred and fifteen people tell us what they want. Um, and then they got, they got a new mayor, but by a slight margin. So I think we need to listen to those four hundred and thirty-two people and offer the seat to Allison first. She accepts it or not. Um, and then, and the next go to Louise. Those are two candidates we know who are willing to be on this council. And we have heard from the public what, what they want. And so as those representatives, we need to listen to them. So, um, I, you know, I, I would move at this point that we do a direct appointment. We offer it to Allison because she got the most votes. Um, she says no, we go to Louise. We offer it to Louise. If she says no, and then I think we go to an application process, which we should define tonight. Um, I was supposed in my motion, I, I can, I can break down something, but I think, I think there needs to be an application. I think there needs to be a resume. I think there needs to be a written statement. And, um, I really liked Monterey's process that they used, uh, where they had twelve interview questions that they gave out at the application time. So I think we should have twelve interview questions that we establish as a council. Um, and then I think, uh, we should also have a, did I say written statement?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so resume and written statement. Oh, and then, um, similar to Monterey, they had, um, uh, twenty signatures they had to get. So it's a one to a nomination paper. I know we're trying to be timely with this. Um, we go that route. I guess that's the end of my motion. Um, slight comment. I think if you go that route, we, we need to also be timely, which require, um, another council meeting to, to make some final decisions on those applications in terms of the tools. Um, and then we get it out as soon as possible. But, um, that's, that's my motion.
Okay, so a clarification on the motion. You're talking at the next council meeting, not specifically this council.
I'm saying, right, right, the process is that we ask, um, Allison Kerr if she'd like to be appointed. And maybe, maybe that's something that Don Gert called her out. I, I, I don't know. We can, I mean, we just need to ask her. Um, so we ask Allison if she'd like it. If she says no, then we ask Louise. She says no, then we go to an application process.
Okay, and we execute that after the next meeting, or you're saying you between now and the next meeting?
Uh, well, we, you know, I, we need to come up with that process, right? If we do end up like wanting to go to an application process and both those candidates say no, we should have something written up.
Yeah, I asked that because of the legal validity with, you know, this not being agendized here as, as, you know, that potential. So I, I, I would refer to the city attorney, if that's even a, a feasible motion. So if I'm, I'm understanding right, the proposal then is to define, not do the appointment tonight, but the process is such to reach out to former Mayor Kerr, former council member, uh, council, just to gauge whether or not they want to do that and if not, come back on the twenty-fourth of January for the, or the, either to appoint them if they say yes, or the application process.
Right. Ask Allison. If she says yes, we come and swear in on the twenty-fourth. If she says no, then we reach out to Louise. She says, yeah, for Mount Louise, or if she says no, um, hopefully this would be done within a day or so. We get their answers and then we move on to an application process.
So, so my understanding of the process is it wouldn't be an appointment tonight, but it would lay out a process and we should do so. Okay. I understand. So with that, we have a second, second on that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
Okay, my motion is, is got a second, so let's discuss it. Councilmember Louie, you can start.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, uh, as we have really said, like heard from our public, from our neighbors in here, uh, the motion that is on the floor right now, it's really like the, the logical way, uh, to go. And, and the reason for that is, of course, we had just a recent election. And, and we have heard our whole city speaking up, uh, and I know in an election, it's always a popular top contest. And, uh, whoever really, uh, got the, the most number of votes, uh, would be able to win and be able to come over here at the time. And just like, uh, all of us who are here right now. So, uh, uh, many of the residents of our city trusted us to be here. So that's why, uh, we're over in here. The suggestion of, of having the most popular candidate who didn't make it, uh, in our election really just makes sense and logical. Because, uh, to me, I'm always the, uh, hearing the voice of the people. We are all here because of them. And of course, uh, uh, you may probably think that, uh, well, the other, the most popular candidate who didn't make it was running under the mayorship race. And, but I just want also to, uh, remind us that the mayor's seat is also a council member's seat. Uh, we all have the same power. The mayor got one vote. I, I, as a council member, also has one vote. And we are all voted large. So we're not like other cities that are, the council members are, uh, elected by district. And, uh, and, and of course, uh, we were able to see that the, uh, the, uh, the, the appointment of Allison, and she did the job already, like, uh, as being here in the council, in the previous, uh, council. So, uh, there's no doubt that, uh, she can be the most valuable addition, uh, to our council right now. So, uh, uh, that's why I agree with the motion. Uh, it's just like, I, I, I don't know if, if, uh, Ms. Allison Kerr is still interested, uh, but that's one thing that we're going to find out. Uh, but however, we really like have heard a lot, a lot of our neighbors here that they wanted her. So it's kind of like call, uh, for her, uh, to be in that council. That's all Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson. I maintain my position that, uh, I believe that the recommendation put forth for the application process as described and amended steps and then is the fairest, most equitable way to proceed. The city has followed this procedure in the past, uh, with great success. It's a flawless, um, very effective method, zero fiscal impact. It gives, uh, ample time notice to the public for any potential applicants, as has been raised by the public. It is my, my belief also. And, um, so far as the, uh, some of the requirements, the stipulations, uh, for the motion segments of it anyway, uh, I don't see a reasonable cause for a resume. I was not asked for one for this position. I simply stated, I was a general contractor. Thanks for having your faith in me to build something here. Uh, written statement is debatable. I'm agreeable with that. And, uh, twenty signatures or, or more for residential support, for, for, uh, public support is appropriate also. But again, um, I did not walk in prepared of the mindset that we would be, um, even considering an immediate appointment, a nomination therefore, or to stifle the outcome of this meeting to, uh, consider Olaf for another meeting, um, to achieve anything other than what was agendized. And so, uh, consistent with my original comments in the first council, I maintain my position therefore.
Okay, thank you, Jared. Councilmember Shirley, would you like to add anything?
Um, just that I, I would hope that this council, uh, can work together to come to a solution. I, I, I am concerned about a split vote, to be honest. Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I would really hope that you heard the comments tonight. Um, I, I do think Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I would really hope that you heard the comments tonight, um, I, I do think. It would be monumental if we can go in this direction, it would warm my heart. I, my husband and I, the tears very quickly, um. And, uh, I, I, I would like to see us all work together, and I, I, I really. You know, together with our residents and with what we, um. Just, you know, went through within an election, I would really hope that you can support this motion.
Yeah, okay, thank you so much, and I, and I really appreciate those comments, and I, and I feel the same way. Uh, just to use some of the comment from my, well, councilmembers. Um, it was mentioned, you know, we, we have to really listen to the voice of the people. Uh, as councilmember Louie had discussed, and from councilmember Shirley. The process being open and transparent is, is, uh, also very important. And I just want to thank everyone who came here today to provide the feedback to us, I know that's not easy. And I, I appreciate you providing those thoughts, it helps us to make a better decision. And as I listened to all of you, there were some common themes that came out, first and foremost, the idea of a special election. Absolutely does not make sense, and I don't think there are any council member up here, or anyone in the public that would support that. Um, the, the other thing that you talked about is the timeliness, um, and. Either whether it's a direct appointment, or we go through a application process, you're gonna have that timeliness. You're looking for someone who is qualified, there's, there's no question that came through, uh, very clearly. That you want someone who is got the ability and has got the experience. To come in and do a job right off the bat. And most importantly, you want what's best for the city. And, you know, unfortunately, that's subject to interpretation, because what's best for the city. In the eyes of one person might not be the same in, in someone else's eyes. The thing I worry about with a direct appointment is that we have not allowed. Others to participate in this process that maybe just would be just as qualified. Or have just as much experience, uh, as the qualities and experience that you all mentioned here today. And for me, it's important if we're looking at making sure that the voice of our citizens are heard. That we open up this process to, to others, so that others can voice their opinion too. It was mentioned by councilmember Alec that the, the option of a direct appointment was not part of the staff report. And I think it might be that there are others who wanted to voice concern. That because that wasn't listed as a potential option, or they had a, a potential candidate, or they themselves wanted to participate in it. They did not, because it was not part of the agenda that, um, that was sent out to the public. The other part of a application process. Is there is nothing stopping any candidate from applying, and those candidates. Uh, not only, uh, articulating their abilities, capabilities, their experience. But also the folks that back them being able to do the same in public comment, so for me. Meeting the requirements or addressing the concerns that have been brought up by the council. I think it's best that we go through an application process that has been mentioned before, we've used before. And we've never had issue with it, I think we've had other candidates that wanted to be part of positions, whether it's the council. Or the planning commission that have been appointed through that, and done extremely well. So for me, I think for openness, transparency. And just allowing the voice of the people to be heard, that is the process that I believe we need to follow. And once again, that does not, uh. Disallow anyone within the city from participating in this process, and I think that is the most important. So with that, um, we have a, a motion, and we have a second, so I'll call for a vote, uh, of both.
Councilmember Alec. Member Louie.
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley.
Aye.
Mayor Donaldson.
No. Okay, so we have a split vote, um, in, in this particular case, I'll defer to our city attorney. Uh, the, the motion does not pass, so it does not have, and discussion can continue until we. Okay, so with that, um, we've talked about now three options. The one option, as we've discussed, going to a special election. Obviously doesn't make sense, and is not supported, I believe not supported by the council and the public. Um, are there any, uh, motions to pursue option one? Of a special election?
Yeah, yeah, um, so in your desire to go into an application process. It's highly likely that we'll end up with the two candidates that were, um, running at the last election. Right, odds are, we're gonna have those two, um. What, how are we gonna, how would that situation be different than what we're, what we're in now? How, how would we solve that, that problem, would you feel more comfortable going with the voice of the people? Um, in that application process, uh, you know, after hearing the voices tonight? Would you feel more comfortable voting for that candidate after an application process?
Yeah, obviously, it's something that we would have to work through as a council to come to a decision. Uh, we have, we have heard from, the overwhelming majority was from one potential candidate. And I think there are others out there that if they knew a direct, uh, uh. Application process was in play, that they might be here as well, and, and I just want to make sure that. Any citizen within Delray Oaks that has that desire is able to potentially pursue that.
Okay, I'd like to point out that no one came here today saying, I would like you to, to choose an application process, because I plan to apply. I, I mean, that, that would be a logical solution for them, if they, they were really interested. I, I wish, I wish they would have said, yes, please choose an application process, because I'm interested in being involved, and we didn't hear that.
Yeah, and I think that, that's, that's a fair point, and I would say if this was part of a packet as a potential option. I think you would have seen that.
Well, an application was part of the package.
I mean, a direct appointment, if, if it was a direct commitment situation.
Well. You, if there was a direct appointment, you think someone would, I, I'm not understanding your comment, I guess.
But, and I guess I'm not understanding the, the point that you're trying to make.
I'm saying that if, if there was someone out there in the city who said, you know what, I think I wanna, I wanna apply for this. And I see that tonight they're deciding on a process, I'm gonna go there tonight, and I'm gonna tell them to pick the application process, because I would like to apply. No one, no one said that, so my, my feeling in a sense, I, I could be wrong. Um, is that, I'm not sure, I, we, we may end up be in the exact same place that we are right now. With, with potentially, again, I, we, we haven't asked them to candidates. Who historically has said they've been interested, I mean, I guess.
Yeah, and. I, I agree that we, we could potentially be in a, in very similar situations. Um, but it's even hypothetical to say that any other candidate may or may not be part of any application process. I'm just saying, if we do open it up, I think it's fair and equitable for the people in the city and transparent. That we allow that process to play out. Uh, and, uh, I, I think the best way to get to that and to address. Not only the concerns of the council, but the concerns of the public, is that we go through that process.
Okay, so, the only way, I, 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 I want to hear you, and I wanna, I wanna work together. Um, but I, I, I do feel like we need to have something more than just an application.
And, and if it looks like we want to go through the application process, we can absolutely talk about what that should look like.
What would you suggest it looks like?
Well, first, we gotta decide which option we're gonna go there. So, if, if, if there's a motion that we go with the application process. Then I'm open to anyone who wants to make that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if I may, that we, uh. Select option two, to direct staff to begin the application process. Effective tomorrow, January sixth, with a closing date of January eighteenth. After which, uh, the public has had ample time, council has had ample time. Uh, for all of us to, uh, review the applications and to reconvene on the twenty-fourth, would it be? To, uh, select from the applicant's appointed position for this getting past the seat.
And just a point of clarification on your motion, or that being to follow the, the same application process that the city currently has?
Yes, as described, uh, both with, in the city manager's verbal presentation, verbal and video. And described in, in the agenda here.
Is there?
As an aggregate, yes.
Okay, a second? Yeah, I'll second that motion. Okay, let's discuss. Now, if, if, if there's additional concern, um, I'll start with councilmember Louie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the, for the motion on the floor, uh, uh. First of all, if we're gonna do the application process, uh, how are we gonna even choose? The, the applicant, once we're gonna be having a direct interview, I know, uh. Uh, I've been to many of the hiring boards, uh, and we want to make sure that it's really fair, transparent. And objective, uh. And I know that people might probably say that it, it's not really like, uh, we can't really make it as a perfect objective process. However, there are tools that we can make in order to really make it more objective. If it's not one hundred percent objective, uh, that's why I, if we're gonna. Have this, uh, application process, we can't just be deciding based on our gut feeling or based because. Uh, the applicants are friends, because that's really like, uh, not the right thing to do. And, and me, as a person, is not analytical, and, uh, I want the. A set of criteria, how are we gonna even be deciding, uh, which one to choose? Because, uh, again, uh, if we're gonna be really like taking this, this route. We need to have something in place, not only like the resume, not only the written statement, not only the. Uh, the nomination paper, uh, but there should be a. A, like, a guideline or a rubric, or a set of criteria that we want in there. So that, uh, uh, and we can even, uh, be transparent, and we'll open this up to, to the public. What we like, we want, and what's important to us, and based on our core values, and, and then sort of, uh, people who would. Apply, or really, they, that does read like the requirements. Uh, of, of us, because right now, uh, we can't just be, uh. I've seen the Monterey process, uh, the way they did, uh. However, I was wondering, how did they decide, how did they say that I want that kind of, of application? Who we just literally, uh, uh. Uh, we just need to have like the. Criteria that is, that we all gonna be unified, uh, how we're gonna be choosing our appointee. Because now, you're suggesting, uh, right now, the, uh, we have this motion. That it's gonna be on our hands now, like, uh, if we're gonna do this, um, application, uh, process. It's not anymore the voice of the people, and how can we even, uh. Uh, get the voice of the people rather, other than just public comments? So that's, uh, one thing that I want to really like point out, if. If I can make an amendment to the motion. Uh. All of the requirements, and I want to add, like, a, a comprehensive rubric. Uh, that we can adopt in really like evaluating our applicants. Uh, that's my, uh, you know, uh, my amendment to the motion. Because I want to, uh, work with everyone, and, uh, and, and I, I'm not the person who's really like very rigid. Uh, because, uh, I've seen your point, okay, so we can have an, an application process. However, uh, I've also seen some gaps, if we're just gonna only be having like an application paper, and also a written statement, and. And the, those nomination paper, uh, I wanna know as a council member, how I'm gonna choose. Uh, the, the right, uh, the right applicant.
Okay, so you support the process that the city has laid out? The, the, the standard operating procedure for appointments that the city has established, but. The, the modification, if I'm getting it right, is that you would like a rubric as part of that, in my direct with?
A rubric with the criteria that we decide and we follow during the, the interview process.
Okay, for each individual, individual council member?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And any other comments, questions?
No, that, that's, that's my amendment to the, to the motion, if I can.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Howard.
I have nothing further, uh, only to express that I'm entirely open to, I, I know I made a very specific motion. In accordance with it, uh, as recommended, but I'm absolutely open to, uh, you know, a more scrutinizing, um. Uh, process, criteria set forth. Um, I need to remind myself that when I was campaigning for, uh, this seat. Uh, I myself was under such, uh, strict discretion, I filled out this. Pretty rudimentary form, and the rest was, uh. Barring the confidence of my community by meeting them individually, and, uh. So, uh, I don't know that it should be any more so than, uh, what was, what we were projected to as, uh. Candidates, but, uh, again, I'm, I'm open to any suggestion. Yes, that there should be, but, uh, any in specific, I'd love to hear.
Okay, thank you, any other comments? Councilmember Shirley.
Um, I want to be clear, so it seems as though, um, councilmember Louie suggested a friendly amendment. Right, to add a rubric that is approved by the council. And then is used by each individual, is that our, 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 our scores on the rubric, um, visible to the public?
Yes, it has to be vis- visible, but we have to be transparent.
Okay, and then, um, so. Again, the motion on the table is just for an application, so it's not for a written statement, it's not for. A resume, it's not for signatures, is that correct?
I believe that's how the, the city, uh, procedure is right now, is that correct? Yeah, written statement is part of the application process.
Okay, so application and a written statement, okay, and, um, and councilmember Louie wants a, a.
Rubric.
Um, I, I, it's not my motion, right, so I, as, as far as I understand, those who made the motion need to.
Accept the.
Accept the friendly amendment, so maybe I'll reserve a comment until I know that it's actually.
Uh, yes. Do you have recommendations for the rubric, because I think you all are gonna then discuss the rubric merits and. And then give staff direction on what that rubric would black, because.
You don't wanna make a rubric?
I don't, I. Yeah, if it's a transparent process, then coming up with the objectives for that, um. I'm not quite sure if that needs to be a, a transparent process as well. The, the, the criteria that we come up with, is that something that you were looking at as well? And it goes to the timeliness concerns that I've heard from everyone. I mean, then we're talking about another special meeting to, to talk about criteria. Uh, is that something that you were envisioning?
Uh, well, I, I guess so, because we have to really like think about the, the rubric and the criteria, uh, uh. For, for, for what we're gonna need to, to have in order to select our, our people.
Okay, and once again, we're, we're looking at a timeliness aspect there and putting together an, an additional special meeting. As part of that amendment, would it be okay if the council comes up with, based on the regimen or. We come up with recommendations on criteria and, and, and give that to staff? To be included as part of that decision-making criteria? Are, are you okay with that?
Uh, I guess so, yeah, so that's fair enough.
Okay. Okay, based, uh, are there any other comments?
I guess I need to be clear on that front. So we are getting suggestions outside of our meeting to the, to staff and staff is creating a rubric? John, I'm, I'm.
Is, is that what's, what's your, your envisioning?
Well, uh, well, if I don't have to choose, uh. It would be nice, like, the whole council will be together in providing really like the, the criteria and what's really like important to our people. And that would really reflect as well our core, about our core values. And, and that's really like, uh, one of the things that is really important, uh. And if we can do that, well, it's great, you know, so, uh, uh. That's something that's what I can, I can say, but, uh, because right now, again, uh, uh. We're talking about the process in here and then, and of course, the first mo- motion that we had just died. And, uh, and we're looking for other processes. I know that in a democratic process, it's always messy. And we really need to do the, the hard, the, the work. In, in order to show the people of Delray Oaks that we are logical, we are fair and we're objective. And we can't just be, uh, like pointing someone based on our gut feeling and, and. Our neighbors deserve the fair process and also very transparent process. So, uh, since, uh, I know that the, uh, the direct nomination is really like the, the most efficient way, but. But, uh, the council, uh, going down, so, so that's why now we're even like compromising. Uh, so, uh, half of the council, council wants the application process. Uh, and, and that's why we're also gonna be having those compromised. And then by, by making it really like fair, transparent and objective.
Okay, so to get back to, and, and thank you for those comments, Sean, uh, to get back to the, the amendment. So from what I'm hearing, it would be council members provide the criteria as they see as important, um, criteria in selecting. Uh, someone to be appointed, we provide that to the staff, staff compiles it, and then that becomes part of the packet. As we go forward with the, the, the selection process. Is, is, is that, am I hearing that right?
Uh, well, uh. Because if you're, if you're just gonna submit it to the staff, uh, all of those criteria, they won't even be due because there will even be, uh. We need more discussions, council, uh, to come up with the, with the rubric. Uh, we can't just be, uh, pouring a lot of criteria i- in, in the bucket and then give it to the staff. Because even, uh, uh, like we, we put a lot, one criteria, I need to know. Uh, if we're gonna even be scoring, I need to know what five looks like or what four looks like, what three looks like or two looks like or one. Looks like, because in, in, in my workplace, that I, you know, we, we make it very, uh. Uh, objective and, and these problems that we had didn't really came up because we, we wanted it. Because, uh, uh, there were a lot of concerns before that the, the interview process was not, was not fair, it was biased. So, so we instituted this tool so that we would be able to really come up with a, a fair result. And, and I'm providing this idea to the council, uh, because it does, this has already been done. And, uh, and I, I know it will just take time, uh. Uh, but since the council, the other, you know, council members wanted really like the, the application process. I myself would have been wanting the, the direct one, because it's the most time efficient. And however, uh, the, uh, you know, uh. Turned down by the council, so, so I'm providing this option or new idea.
Right, and we do have a motion on the floor, it's just making that friendly amendment to it and making sure we define what exactly that is. Go ahead, councilman.
Mayor Donaldson, uh, should I accept the friendly amendment and modify the motion? Are we to imply that since such discussion will occur immediately now to further modify the motion? Will this bound deciding this evening? Because as, as council member Uwe stated, it should be discussed among the council as a whole. Um, before it's, uh. Given to staff for consideration and, and for. So will that be this evening directly following the, uh, the referral discussion after a modified, uh, motion or how we?
Well, it's a desire of the council, um, is what it comes down to. And I, I'm just trying to find a, a solution to it, uh, and a process to it where it, it meets. The concerns of the public and the council members here. And one of, one of those. Concerns was the, the timeliness of, of this whole process. Because we do have boards and committees and so on that we have to appoint council members to, so we're, we're, the timeliness aspect of it is key. Did you have anything else?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Donaldson, uh, then, uh. Well, let me let, uh, council member Shirley go first, further discussion before I, uh, modify the motion.
Just as a suggestion, we, we could release the application then, right? Because the rubric is something that we use at the end, right, as we're interviewing. And it should be available to the applicants, but it doesn't have to be available to the applicants on the exact day that they, we open the application. So, um, what we could do is we could open the application as soon as possible. And then, um, at the beginning of next week, it, it's, and I'll, I'll be honest, it's hard to make a rubric. And so it's gonna take some work on our part. Um, and I think we should talk about that process. And so it will require another special council meeting for us to come together. And talk about criteria and, and what we want to look at and how we're gonna grade our applicants. Um, in terms of our criteria and, you know, what, what, what is an excellent score, what is a five, you know, what is one? Um, and so it's gonna take some work on our part, but if, if you wanna do an application process, that's what I'm, I'm willing to do. I think we can open the application, get that started and then work on rubric and then get that published. Those applicants, that they can see that rubric before they turn in their application. So it means if they're gonna turn in the application by the end of the year. We would need to publish the rubric by the end of the year.
Okay, the, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, so with that amendment to your motion. Uh, councilmember Halleck, uh, is, is that, would you like to restate your motion?
Thank you, Mayor Donaldson, uh, in accepting the friendly amendment to the initial motion, would like to modify said motion. Uh, maintain greatly in part that, um, according to recommendation by the city manager and staff. Uh, we direct staff to begin the application for city council appointing position. Beginning tomorrow, January sixth, with a deadline of January eighteenth. Uh, in the interim, that, uh, we schedule a, another, uh, special city council meeting. To establish a rubric and criteria, grading system, a scale by which the council members, seated council members will decide. Who will appoint for that decision.
Hey, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, uh, hopefully you got all that, Karen, I'm sorry about that.
I'm recording too.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I'll call for a vote.
Councilmember Halleck?
Yes.
Councilmember Uwe?
Aye.
Councilmember Shirley?
Aye.
Mayor Donaldson?
Aye. Okay, motion pass. So the next item is, our next meeting will be January twenty-fourth. Twenty twenty-three at six P M. In the, in the meantime, the meeting that I discussed, the motion that will also be published by staff. And with that, this meeting adjourned.